We'd like to call the April 24 meeting of the Bruce Township zoning board of appeals to order. Roll call, please Dana.
Tremblay?
Here.
Keller?
Here.
Mas?
Here.
Lerton?
Here.
Please rise if you're able for the pledge of reasons.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is approval of the agenda. The additions, corrections.
Two small corrections.
Those are the agenda.
On the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved and approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item five is approval of the March 27 ZBA minutes. Any additions, corrections to the minutes?
Just a couple of small corrections, one on page two, one on page three, just where the, it says, the, it says, three quarters down, township meeting at the issue of the four to one ratio in the future, I think that just needs to be reversed, we always think of it as frontage to depth, so it should be one to four ratio, and then the same thing on the draft on page three, just to change those ratios to one to four.
Okay. And that's consistent with what the ordinance says too, so.
Yes.
That would be okay. Okay. Are there any other comments regarding the minutes? Hearing none, motion to approve.
So moved with the corrections.
Second.
Movement supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item six is unfinished business, is there any unfinished business? Hearing none. We'll move to new business. That is the variance request for the split on the property. We have the, obviously the application. At this time, would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is opened at 7:07, can't see the clock that well, but pretty close. Okay. There is, before we start, just want to make a couple of comments about the portion of the meeting when the public is allowed to talk about this particular agenda item, there's another item further down where you have something that other business not specifically related to this request. The applicant certainly has as much time as they feel they need to present their information, other comments if possible, if you can hold them to three minutes, but if there's something important, we certainly want to hear it, so we don't, we don't cut you off at the three-minute mark, so, and as I say, we're real interested in what the applicant and those concerned have to say, so, this is a formal process, but we try to make it as easy as we can as we move forward. So, we will ask for the presentation on the request, board members will ask questions. If there's anything that comes up as a result of the questions that somebody wants to, you know, contribute against, certainly you're free to come back up and give us any additional information that you want, or so. Prior to starting, is there any questions on that? Okay. So whoever is going to present the information, if you step forward, give your name and address.
Good evening, my name is George Vacaris, I am the attorney for the independent trustee of the Russell Canoust Revocable Living Trust, the, one of the applicants, one of the other trustees is here with me, Barbara Canoust, and my address is 41,000 West Seven Mile Road, Suite 200, Northville Township, Michigan.
We're all ears.
This property has been in the Canoust family for at least a couple of generations, it's been farmed by the Canoust family, and upon the death of Russell's parents, he received the property. Russell was the grantor of the trust that these trustees are now administering. Russell passed away several years ago, and the trustees deemed that it was in the best interest of the beneficiaries of the trust, who are all family members, to list the property for sale. So for several years now, the property has been listed for sale, we do have a buyer for the property, but two of the family members wanted to keep actual acreage as their portion of the inheritance from the trust. So we have sought an accommodation, we have come to an agreement that they would receive 20 acres jointly. One of those individuals, one of the family members, if I may point out, in the materials there's a copy of a survey, I have several copies here, if you'd like me to just hand them out, it might be easier.
We have.
Okay.
What's it look like?
So, it looks like this.
Yeah, yes, we have those.
So if you look at this parcel B, that's, that's the parcel that we're, we've also concurrently filed an application to create a lot split, so we're trying to create a 20-acre parcel to fulfill this bequest to these two beneficiaries of the trust. Now, the parcel is not regularly shaped, you'll see that along Fisher Road, there's kind of a box here, that box is about five acres of property, and there are two residences on those five acres, each, each of those residences has about two and a half acres. So if you're holding the survey in this manner, to the left, the two and a half acres that runs along this, this portion of the 20, proposed 20-acre parcel that comes down to Fisher Road, one of our beneficiaries owns that two and a half acres as well. So that person is going to be owning her two and a half acres and is going to be the co-owner of the remainder of the property, so what we're really looking at is just a very small, two and a half, what did you say Heidi?
Two point six four, I believe is.
Two point six four, but the frontage, what was that? About 300 feet or so? So about 300 feet is the only portion that's not going to be part of this overall property owned by the same person. So, and if you count in, I know you can't do that because they're not the same parcel, and I don't know whether this person is going to combine the parcels in the future, so I don't want to make that representation, but at least this person controls, will be in control of both parcels along with the other beneficiary who's receiving title along with her. So if this request for variance was granted, since this is a 20-acre parcel, the proportions of the parcel would still be consistent with the Michigan Land Division Act requirements, which are limited to 10 acres. And I'm also informed that the township is actually considering changing the zoning ordinance to limit the applicability of these proportion requirements to 10-acre parcels. So perhaps in the near future, this parcel won't stand out, it'll be consistent with, with many other parcels in the community. And I would point out that a similar variance was granted on an application made in January of this year, so the board would actually be acting consistent in the manner that it has very recently on requests of this nature. Right now, the property is being utilized again as simply as farmland. I can't answer for what they will use it for in the future, but at least it will remain intact and remain within the family. Do you all have any questions regarding this?
Before we have questions, I would ask Mr Tremblay, who is a member of the planning commission, to just give the board and others that are here, just a brief update on the issue that you discussed, the change in the ordinance, that had it been in place, we wouldn't be here tonight.
Yeah, I'm all ears.
Yeah, we, the planning commission was presented some information from the last zoning board meeting regarding a situation similar to your own, and the planning commission reviewed some language at our meeting that would preclude having a one to four ratio for acreage greater than 10 acres, provided that the frontage or the dimensions aligned with the zoning requirements. That will be going for a public hearing in our May meeting, and if it's successful there, we'll be going to the board of trustees at their May meeting for either approval or denial.
I would add just one other matter, this doesn't really relate to zoning, but just so you understand a bit of the background, the individuals involved here are elderly, and I just received notice that one of, the other property owner, not the one that lives contiguous with this property, but the other owner that was to receive this parcel just passed away. So we're, we're trying, we're trying to get this done so that these people can receive what, you know, they had hoped for, they're, they're part of their parents' farm.
Yeah, we had heard there was some need.
You have good information.
Yeah, well, very sorry about that. At this time, would open to questions from the board, if you have any question.
So did you say, in that little square where there's two houses?
Mm-hmm.
Is it the south house that is going to maintain the ownership of these 20 acres?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know the compass points on this, on this survey, so I don't know, so Fisher Road.
Right where, right where Fisher Road is, there's the arrow pointing north.
Okay, so, yes, it would be the south house.
The south.
Correct.
And is, is that the one, I think some, I don't, that's referenced as, it's in one of the exhibits, is that the property you were talking about? I wasn't sure. Upper East Property Owner, that's what it said in the exhibit, and that must be the same place?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Page two of exhibit one, I believe there's a, an error in the second paragraph.
That really should be 58A. I think that was corrected.
We did submit an addendum.
Addendum replaces that.
Yeah.
And that was corrected.
And the current zoning is R1. R1, five, is that five acres?
Two? Yeah, a little over. Yeah, a little over two.
A little over two.
Two point six four.
And I think the frontage, and R1 is 150 feet, so they would need the frontage requirement, which is not the whole ratio. Any other?
When you were looking at the property, was there any consideration of this particular issue in the settlement agreement?
With regard to.
You could have shifted some property so that you wouldn't have this issue.
Yeah, that would, the location of the property was determined in great measure by the buyer for the remaining property, we asked the buyer what, because the buyer's original offer was for all the property, so we went to the buyer and tried to cooperate with the buyer to say, what, will you give up 20 acres, and if so, where are those 20 acres? And then we also tried to accommodate the recipients of the property who wanted it to extend back to the tree line, so we went through a couple of different variations of the survey. The buyer of the property gave, gave a couple different options as to the location and the shape, but I don't think the buyer or the recipients had considered this proportion issue at that time. So the recipient said, we like, we like this option, and the buyer was willing to do it, so that's what we ran with.
So the buyer is.
And it seemed to, it seemed to be clean because it was creating a nice straight line, the, the other properties are incorporated in it, the remaining parcels are, you know, regularly shaped.
Not that it had varied enough, what our decision would be necessarily, but the buyer's going to purchase parcel A and C on this survey?
Yes.
Is that, Mr. Bell?
Yes, that's right.
Any other questions, Dana, any questions? I have a couple. The property that is split, the two parcels that are split, when were those split and was the, was the property owner the person that split those off?
You're referring to this five acres, that's kind of the cutout here?
Yeah.
Well, the one property was always owned by the person, I don't know when she first moved in there, Lois.
1965.
Okay, there we go, 1965. The other one was sold, was split off and sold, what, 19, 2000?
1995.
1995, okay.
But by the property owner, they created a split. The, I guess this, there's, I couldn't determine where the west property line was, but I did see some old, a barn and some old building, is that on the property, or is that the, the property west?
There's, there is another parcel of property, that's approximately 120 acres, that runs along, I believe, the south portion of, yeah, along Taft Road. So that 120 acres is also subject to the sale. So the 120 plus parcel C and parcel A are being sold, and parcel B is what we're carving out for the beneficiaries.
So parcel C has not been sold yet?
No, it's.
The family still own, you know, A?
No, parcel C is subject to the purchase agreement, that, so it is being sold.
Right, it's too late to change any lines there, because it's not really square, it's 541 on the west side and 588 on the east.
Correct, it's not square.
It was 541 on both sides, I think we meet our ratio.
The reason it's not square is because Taft Road does not run east and west.
Yeah, parcel C is.
Reason for the difference.
I know, but if you. If parcel C was a little skinnier along Fisher Road.
Oh, I see.
It would make, meet the requirement.
Mm-hmm.
Taft Road doesn't.
If you look at the, if you look at the east-west line.
Excuse me?
The north line of that property.
Sir.
That is equal, the same distance if you go north to south.
Could you step to the podium and give your name and address, so then you can answer the questions too, makes it a lot simpler. Thank you.
My name is Ray Desy, D-E-S-Y, I'm a real estate broker. What I was trying to say is, if you would look at the north line of the property that's being split, and go directly south, to the south line of the property that's being split, that is an equal distance. If you look at Taft Road, the angle is completely different.
And as I.
So it is a square parcel.
Okay, but as I understand this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, this has been, this particular split, these dimensions have been agreed to.
Yes.
In, in the document that.
Yes.
That has been signed.
Correct.
So, these aren't subject to.
No.
Any modification.
No.
What we have in front of us is what we have to, have to look at and have to deal with, it's, there's not an option.
The settlement agreement's very specific.
Very, yes, sounds like it.
But, you know, one of the things says, was the attached settlement, the settlement agreement was never part of our package.
I talked, I, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong again, I did talk to the township attorney today, and we discussed that the settlement agreement is mentioned in an attachment, and the narrative that's given in new exhibit one should satisfy, that there's really no need for us to have a copy of that settlement agreement to determine what we have to determine. There are requirements, and I believe that agreement will be part of the packet that goes to the assessor when we make the split, so as far as the necessity for that to be part of this package, it really, it's really not a necessity at this time, the narrative kind of covers that, so, did I get that right?
Thank you, yeah. And there are, there are provisions in the settlement agreement that don't pertain to the real estate at all.
Right.
That's just, you know, it, it's an agreement amongst family members for adjustment of certain things within the trust distribution, so it really bears no, has no bearing on, on this property issue.
Are there any other questions, comments? Is there any, thank you. Is there any other information that you would like to provide?
No, we view it as somewhat of a, kind of a simple issue. I know you have the interests of the public to protect, but these people have been here for quite a while, they've owned a very large tract of land here in the township, they've used it productively, and they're looking to preserve a portion of it, so, or receive a portion of it. It would have been easy for them just to say, you know what, I'll just take my cash, and we probably wouldn't be here right now, well, we certainly wouldn't be here right now, so.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to the request or provide any other information?
Mr. Desy's address.
Sure. Oh, okay.
Your address, sir.
Oh, my address?
For the record.
15650 Three Mile Road, Ray, Michigan.
No other comments?
Want to speak from here, or do you want me over there?
Over here, please. Name and address.
My name is Paul S. Stephen Burton, 7249 Fisher Road, I'm the other parcel, next to the other parcel, and the numbers that I've had for over 20 years of living there was frontage 237.50, and the depth would be 485, and now I'm getting the 337.50 for the frontage, but along the depth, I'm getting 468.55, and I'm wondering, I've heard a lot of things, and I'm not familiar with all the jargon of ins and outs and surveys and stuff like that, but there's about 17 feet that I'm missing compared to what they've come up with and what I've been paying for, for over 20 years, so I was wondering.
I can tell you what my understanding is, perhaps.
I can too, soon.
There's measurements from two separate places is basically what, what you're looking at here. One is from the 1/16 section line, and the other, I believe, was from the center line in the road, that's what it appears to be.
What would a center line of a road have to do with your, I mean, I mean, maybe years ago or whatever like that, or something like that, where they've owned out, but you would figure your property line is, and where you're really, where your property line, not where our road is, where our Fisher Road is.
And you aren't the only ones who's confused by this, it took a long time to figure out what exact, which, which lines were here, but I think we have an excellent.
Another attorney here who, yeah, who also raised the same issue.
Okay.
But it, it won't change your deed, it won't change your property description, and it doesn't, despite the fact that, that, that property line measurement seems to be different, it's still 20 acres that are within the bounds of, of these property lines, it's just the description on the, on the old legal description started over here.
Okay.
And just, that was just a point of reference, but, you know, the property begins here, despite the fact that they used points.
So it started, my property's out in the road.
Correct.
To a degree.
Yeah, the right of the way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just, just so you know, that if, as, as we go through this, if it's approved, we will also stipulate that this site plan is, is not part of, of the record of the, of the split, at least to this body.
Okay.
It's simply a reference document for us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Okay, then, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other question? Any other questions?
I'm sorry if I caused you, I lost sleep.
All right, hearing none. Entertainer motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Moved and supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. At this time, the board will openly discuss what, what information we have and what direction we want to go, and then at some point, we will entertain a motion, so.
It appears to me like this is a, on a carbon copy of what we reviewed recently last month, but it's the same, same principle of the front to depth, frontage to depth ratio that currently is in the ordinance at one to four, and this is like one to four and a half, something like that.
Yeah.
Close to it. So, and that technically doesn't meet the ordinance. I spoke with assessing myself today, and, you know, they took the applications in, and you're here because you made the application, because it didn't meet the requirements. As you mentioned, meets the Land Division Act, but it doesn't meet the local ordinance currently. So I, in terms of the size of the property and total acreage of the property, I don't, I don't see a roadblock here to say this can't happen, in my opinion, this should happen.
Any other comments at this point? Well, I just want to take us a minute and kind of paraphrase what the charge of the ZBA is and what criteria we apply when making the decision. It's, it's pretty specific. And just for your information, want to make sure that you understand what, what our parameters are and what we have to operate under. So, and again, I'm going to paraphrase them. "The strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance would cause a practical difficulty and deprive the owner of rights enjoyed by all other property owners owning the property within the same district. Conditions and circumstances are unique to the property and not particularly applicable to other properties in the same zoning district. The conditions and circumstances unique to the property were not created by the owner or the previous owner. Requested variance will not confer special privileges that are denied other proper, properties that are similar, and requested variance will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the Bruce Township zoning ordinance." So those are the parameters that, that we will base our decision on. So if there's any question about that, I'll try to answer it, but I think it's pretty clear. So we are not, the one question certainly is who, that the previous owner in making the split is what, for this 20 acre parcel, creates the issue that we're dealing with right now. But I think it's safe to say that at the time this was done, there was no, I guess, who could perceive this day, and while we have to consider it, we don't, every one of the criteria don't have to be met in order to approve a, the variance. So, try to answer that question up front. Are there any other comments from the, from the board members? Hearing none, we will entertain a motion.
I'll take a turn, I'll take a turn and stand there. These motions get a little bit long, folks, so kickback. I, my motion will be to approve the variance as requested, based on the strict enforcement of the zoning ordinance would cause a practical difficulty and deprive the owner of rights enjoyed by other property owners in the same zoning district. The variance requested, these are not in the order that you read them, Mr. Charon. The variance requested will not confer special privileges denied other properties similarly situated in the zoning district. The requested variance will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the township ordinance, primarily due to the size of the parcel they split. And conditions and circumstances are unique to the subject property and not similarly applicable to other properties in the same zoning ordinance. That's my motion. Did you get that, Dana?
Yes.
I believe that it is consistent with the philosophy of the township in trying to preserve the land and property as, as best we can under the circumstances. So we have a motion on the floor. Do we have support?
Support.
We have a motion and support. We have a roll call, please, Dana.
Discussion.
Yeah. Any discussion?
My concern is, is I would also like something entered into the minutes, perhaps in the motion, related to the unique circumstances of the settlement agreement.
I think, yeah.
I think, I think it's important to note that.
All right.
And the record for future reference or future requests for variances, because this is a unique, unique family matter that I think we're also accommodating.
Okay. I don't think it has to be part of the motion, but we can certainly add it to the minutes.
I'd like it in the minutes.
Yeah, we will put that in the minutes, along with the statement that the site plan is presented.
Survey.
I'm sorry, the survey is presented is not part of the, part of the required motion, so we will stick with that.
Thank you, Charlie.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Moss?
Yes.
Teller?
Yes.
Tremblay?
Yes.
Al Hoffman?
Yes.
Lurchin?
Yes.
The variance has been granted, so. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Back to the assessor.
Yeah, back to the assessor. Good luck.
related to this?
We're still in session, okay? Thank you. All right, hearing none. Any communication?
He said, he had a letter.
No communications. Motion to adjourn? Moved. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.